It is 6:00 PM. I would like to call the January 4th study session of the Board of Education Board, if we could stand and start with the lights.
I'd like to lead you into the square of the United States of America and the free republic for which it stands, one nation under our umbrella, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
The Westerosian Central School District acknowledges the indigenous people of this region, and that this building sits on the homeland of the Anuravaga Semenica of the Hugman Sanine Confederacy. It is on these lands that we teach, learn, and live.
Thank you very much, Ms. Curtis Crowe. Welcome everyone to our first meeting of the year. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Johnson, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have one addition. We're going to add H3 field trip request.
Please. May I have a motion to approve the agenda has been taken. Thank you, Ms. Curtis Crowe. And I have second thing, Ms. Curtis Crowe. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All is fair. That is 6-0, Ms. Lusick. Mr. Solomon is unable to find us to make a statement. Next is study session. It's the K3 focus area, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Metris. I'm not going to say a lot, but I do want to just introduce the event tonight. It's the K3 study session. As you see on the board, it's Jerry Through the Tears. I'm super excited about that, but I want to welcome our family, families and our students. And I just want to say as superintendent, on behalf of Board of Education, thank you so much for your time being here tonight and being part of the experience. These are some things that we do throughout the year. It gives the Board an opportunity to interact and engage with the students and staff firsthand and kind of experience what's happening in our schools at the ground floor. It's a way for them to stay well informed as decision makers and that top tier of governance. So with that, I want to turn over to our Assistant Superintendent for instruction, Ms. Miga. She does a lot of work with our principals and with our staff to put this together to provide the challenges. Ms. Miga, anything you'd like to add or to introduce?
Yeah, just, you know, obviously they will do the majority of sharing tonight, but just, you know, I think we've done so much work and you've seen over multiple presentations now are full of alignment and trying to make sure that, you know, we are providing equitable experiences across, especially at our K3 level, six buildings across buildings. But I really appreciate the approach that our K3 principals and team are taking tonight to demonstrate some of those pieces that we've been working on through our alignment, through really the different supports and programs that we have in place for our students. So with that, I will turn it over to our principals.
Thank you, Mrs. Miga, and welcome to our Board of Education tonight, as well as all of our families and all of our students here with us this evening. I'm Alicia Spitz.
I'm Dr. Farrell, Principal here at Cobra and Prior.
And I am the Principal at Rupie and Semenica Schools here in Westerosian Way. And as Mrs. Miga has shared with you, we are hoping that through tonight's presentation, you are going to be able to see the various programmatic structures and practices that we implement to best support all of our students here at Westerosian Way.
So before we review our essential questions, we want to do a quick folder review. We have, we prepared some folders for you. And on the inside left-hand, on the inside left, you'll notice a study session note catcher, which will go over in few minutes. Behind that is the PowerPoint. On the right-hand side is the schedule for this evening, followed by two lesson plans. The first one is going to be related to the community circle that you will observe in just a moment. The second lesson plan is for our math lesson down the hall, which will break down in a few minutes. And then lastly, you have a copy of the PowerPoint slides that are being used for the math lesson.
As Mrs. Miga alluded to earlier, we have been learning a great deal about the continuum of services during various board meetings over the past few months. Tonight, we hope to demonstrate the success of our current programming here at the K3 level through the tears and how we continue to use our instructional model along with our culturally responsive and sustaining framework to strengthen our teaching practices by focusing on access for all students. Through our learning targets, we hope to demonstrate the success of teaching and learning that occurs every day at our K3 buildings. Our learning targets are as follows. I can understand how our continuum of services supports academic, socio-emotional, communication, sensory, and physical needs of students receiving specialized services. I can reflect on the impact that our current school curriculum is having on our students. And finally, I can show how our new ready math curriculum engages all students through dialogue and higher level thinking.
So as Mrs. Miga started at the beginning, we also hope that you're going to see the focus and alignment through this presentation and specifically the alignment to our strategic action plan. While we're not going to name specifically things around implementation systems, you'll see the impact of those implementation systems through Google up tonight, and you'll see a lot of evidence of the work we've done around curriculum, instruction, and the well-being of all students. Lastly, what we're really using as our rock for teaching and learning is our instructional model. This is something I know you're very familiar with. For today, we are going to be, the lesson plan templates follow preparing students for learning, student-centered learning experience, independent student application and meeting making, and closure. So you'll see those different aspects through the lessons today. But what we really hope you're going to see today are the pieces around it, and those are those pieces around culturally responsive education, assessment, differentiation, and feedback. And what you'll notice in the note catcher is that we're going to ask you, as you move through today, our in-person presentations and our classroom videos that we'll see in the PowerPoint a little bit later on, we're going to ask that you just jot down some noticing and wondering, things that you noticed, things that you might have questions about, we can address those later, but also any connections that you see related to our instructional model. And we're thinking specifically about the connections to documentation, assessment, feedback, and culturally responsive education.
For our very excited first graders coming in to demonstrate a community circle with us this evening, I'd like to quickly review our schedules for the night. Ms. Todd is waiting to be coming in with her first graders in just a moment here. We're going to again do our community circle. Then we'll venture down the hallway to a second, to another, I'm sorry, our second graders are going to do our community circle. Our first graders are going to engage in some ready math curriculum with us this evening. And we're going to have some refreshments following that, and then we'll come back and finish up our presentation. So with that, I would love to welcome Ms. Todd's second grade students. Come on in, kiddos.
If we do want to welcome you, we have some flexing of student actions, and if you'd like to join the art of the circle, the indoor art of the circle, we are welcoming you. Also, now. Okay, thank you for joining us. You're also welcome to join in the circle if you wish. We have exciting things we're going to be talking about. Okay, so we like to begin all of our community meetings with a fun greeting. Usually our spotlight student picks, but I picked one of our favorites. So we're going to put our books down behind us. And can I practice, Emmet, will you practice with me? Can you stand up and practice with me and show me what we're going to do for our greeting? Okay, so we're going to go up to everyone and we're going to say, in a robot reading, we're going to say, "Good evening, Emmet." Okay, let's see how many we can get to go.
Good morning. Good morning, my sister. Good morning.
All right, find your spots. Three, two, one, stand, zero. All right. So Amy, you're going to have to be right here. So we had Amy join us, which is exciting. She's not in our class, she's in our sister class, so it's so great to have her here. All right, so after we do our greeting, right, we always start our morning, Talia, with a really, really nice opportunity to connect, to share values, and all the things that bring us together as a class and as a family. So we're going to have our most recent spotlight student, Hayden, lead us in our classroom constitution.
We are community.
We are community.
We are respectful friends and time bucket pillars.
We are respectful friends and time bucket pillars.
We are yetish and make mistakes.
We are yetish and make mistakes.
We have growth mindsets and perseverance.
We have growth mindsets and perseverance.
We trust ourselves in each other.
We trust ourselves in each other.
We collaborate.
We collaborate.
We explore.
We explore.
We create.
We create.
We have fun.
We have fun.
Find bright spots.
Find bright spots.
We celebrate diversity and inclusivity.
We celebrate diversity and inclusivity.
We advocate and thrive together.
We advocate and thrive together.
We love in our love.
We love in our love.
We are family.
We are family.
So what's beautiful about caring communities is we got to read a few different texts that taught us about the importance of growth mindset, and empathy, and inclusion, and things like that. So we wanted to share with everyone some of the books that we read to give us some ideas. And when we were working through ideas, we did a lot of Kaden strategies, a lot of collaborative group work to come together, right? Glabol eyes?
Yeah.
This is kind of overwhelming, but you guys are doing super, super great. I'm really proud of you. So we're going to share some of the books that contributed to our learning, that contributed to our circles. Okay, let's start with Eleanor.
This book is called, It's Back to School, We Know. It's all about kids living in different countries around the world and going back to school for the year. We learn about diversity and how we can learn through differences.
Sophia.
This book is called, You're Fantastic, You're Lost, You Break. It's about how much time you can break in your life. It just breaks the cycle of how it is done.
Camden's not here, so Amy's reading for him.
This book is called, Back to School, We Know. It's about the problem of how important these things to have in our mindset.
Beautiful. Elliot.
This book is called, The Little Boy, and it's about a boy who has trouble making friends and feels invisible. It taught us about kindness and honesty and friendship.
And Brooke, loud and proud. Beautiful. Now, even though we're not related to the class, we should still treat each other like family. Richie.
This book is called, Powerful, It's Your Bucket. And it's about a boy who learns to be a bucket filler, which means to show kindness, respect, and help other people.
This book is called, Enemy Pie, and it's about kindness and getting to know people for who they are.
This book is called, Ish, and it's about how it is important to make mistakes and learn from them.
This book is called, The Most Magnificent Thing, and it's all about a girl who comes up with an idea to build a seed for her dog and tries many things. It's all about perseverance, never giving up, and creativity.
Guys, awesome. Tommy, just wait one second, okay? So Tommy's going to share the book that we read for our, for this particular lesson, right, our happiness and creativity. Okay, go ahead, Tommy.
This book is called, Being a Battle Good Dog and Other People. This was a text we focused on, making our parents happy. We talked about different things that made us happy, us connecting to each other, finding somebody's peace.
Thank you so much, guys. And so what we're going to do now is we have our talking piece. Who's our talking piece?
Piggy.
Okay, we love Piggy, he's one of our favorites. I don't know if you've all read K. N. J. R. L. books, but awesome, awesome. Seeing a lot of connections here. He is right there. Love this. Okay, so we are going to use the talking piece, and only a person holding the talking piece is going to be the one to share. And the one thing we're going to share, let's close our eyes and take one round. Okay, open our eyes and be leaders. Okay, so only the person holding the talking piece is going to be the person to share. And what we're going to share today is something that maybe made us happy today, or just makes us happy in general. Make sure you're listening to each other in the circle, because you're going to be sharing another round of a connection you're making. Say that with me.
A connection I'm making.
Or something that inspires you. Or something that inspires you. Beautiful. So something that makes me super, super happy is playing with my little girls. Show me a thumb up when you're ready. And share your neighbors.
My name is Brittany. Everything that makes me happy is spending time with my friends.
My name is Mrs. Bor, and what made me happy was hearing all of these amazing books that you had to share today.
My name is Parker, and what makes me happy at school is doing math and skills.
My name is Hayden, and what makes me happy is spending time with family and cousins.
My name is Talia, and my, something that makes me happy are that she has cats because they're really cute and fun.
My favorite thing is playing on my Xbox.
Brooke, say your thing is Taylor Swift.
My name is Sophia, and my favorite thing is Taylor Swift.
My, my name is Tommy, and I, and I, my favorite thing is my squirrel.
My name is Elliot, my favorite thing is messing around with a football.
Awesome. So in our first round, we did a few different things. We talked about some things we liked in school, like math. Some of us like our video games, some of us like Taylor Swift, spending time with family and pets. Now we're going to pass K. N. J. R. L. round again, and I want you to make a connection with someone else in the circle, or say something that you feel inspired by. Well, I feel inspired by Brooke and Sophia, because I'm recently getting into Taylor Swift.
I feel a connection with, what you mean, Richie and, because they talked about spending time with family, and I love to do that, too.
My, I have a connection with K. N. J. R. L. because I like spending time with my cousins and my family. I have a connection with Brooke because I also like her.
My, my, I have a connection with Brooke, Sophia, and Hayden, and I love Taylor Swift, and I like spending time with my family, like guys.
I have a connection to Tommy because I like playing on my Switch.
I have a connection with Richard because I like spending time with him.
I have a crush on, I think he's really spending time with family, he doesn't have to spend too much time with other people.
I have a connection with Richard because he likes spending time with him.
I have a connection with Emily because I love her and I like her.
Thank you. So in that round, we had a lot of connections, not necessarily inspirations, but we talk about how we're inspired by each other all the time, because we're learning things from each other for curiosity and connection all the time. And that's the point of our community circles, right? Okay, so you guys did a really beautiful job sharing that. We connect that to our happiness and creativity, it's out in the center of the week. And tomorrow, we're going to be doing a written response, having to do with everything that we are doing. And that's basically what our assessment tends to be, because it's social emotional, we talk about the impact it has on us. And then we are also able to share those things with each other. So that pretty much concludes, because we didn't have a whole lot of time to do the whole lesson, but thank you so much. And I feel really, really proud of you guys. You did awesome. So you want to do a little elbow high five to people on either side of you? Cool. And we have a lot of gratitude for being able to participate in this. And we're ready for questions, if you have questions for us.
So I have a question actually for our Listwood second graders. I'm Dr. Farrell, friends. We met in the atrium when you first came in, and I'm the principal here at Cobra. At first, I wanted to thank you for being here tonight, and that was wonderful. I'm glad I got to see your community circle. But my question for you is, I want to know, how does it feel for you when you get to start your day with this?
Makes you happy?
Um, it makes me happy.
Do you want to share what was the other question?
We have a second question. What's your favorite part of the community circle? Yeah.
It's when I get to hear people's voices, and I get to hear what those college students think about what we can share in the circle.
Love that. Yeah. And I see some of you making some connections. Yes. Spotlight students?
Um, I like to hear people, because I like to hear about other people.
Okay, learn about what they did over the weekend. That's nice. We're going to continue to go around right here. Yeah, just like you did before. Same?
Same.
What about you? Makes you feel connected, you get to hear about what people do in the community. Thank you, Richie. Yeah.
Same as, um, um, and makes me, you're happy. Oh, yeah. That is where everyone, one at a time, so all of us are just shouting out.
Love that. Thank you. That's very important. So now I'm wondering, you might get a few other questions from some of our board members.
Do we start each day with a circle, or is it like every other?
Every day? At the beginning of the year, we did it every day. And at the beginning of the year, it's a whole nervous, really like, well, the math meeting, and so we did a lot more. The lessons are about 45 minutes, and so we find that we can do more of a Monday and Friday type thing.
So is ELA always kind of immersed into community circles, or is this like a special lesson?
Um, we always try to meld it, yeah. There's like some adoptions that we use, because the curriculum's certainly great, but I feel like there's a lot of other texts that put you in connect with, so we tend to really pull a text that like hits on your root root, or something like that as well.
Does anybody have a favorite question or a topic that you've talked about this year that you want to share?
It's remarkable. We talked about recently that got a lot of people super excited. What was it? About the superhero? What was that question? What was it?
It's, um, what family is not a super hero?
And there had to be some reasons behind it, and they were pretty remarkable, what they came up with. What are some other ones you guys like talking about? Yeah. Okay. What about you, Sophia?
I like, I like, well, we shared our favorite.
Let me share our favorite.
Like, um, like information about what we're going to do. Did it say colors?
It says colors. Great job. Good job. Thank you. Can't be at a morning meeting or community circle or their K3, you know, people, I think, they're the most honest kids I've ever worked with. So some of the stuff that they share, I'm always amazed by, you know, it's just, it's wonderful how open they are, and it creates such a warm environment within a classroom. It's magical, knowing such a special face or face. Before we start our journey down the hallway, we would like to share a few, okay, lost my partner for the evening for a short time, just the course, some support within the continuum that you'll be seeing this evening through both the classroom presentation and also for our videos. Some of our best practices that we're going to demonstrate for you this evening really is the use of visuals, whether it be for our schedules or for expected behaviors. Some students, they'll notice we'll have visuals directly on their desks. The use of music in a lot of our classrooms is very powerful. Modeling, we do a lot of that gradual release model as well, where the teacher will do a lot of that modeling verse, and then it might be a shared experience, and then we really do then release it, taking some application by our students. A structured routine is critical for all of our students, repetition, strong tiered instruction, so really that balance of guided groups, RTI, and then that whole group instruction. The adult support to assist in sensor breaks, communication, you'll see that a lot through our videos this evening. Family communication, as you might imagine, is just vital for all students within our district. It really is instrumental in the success of all of our programs. We have regular team meetings to assist in our student success in problem solving across our peers, so some teams need daily, to be honest with you, others need weekly, some need monthly as a full team. So just different structures in place for the teams to ensure that all students are meeting success. And then the inclusion of occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, social emotional support teams for individual and classroom supports. Okay, so, I'm just working with the families next door. So what we're going to be highlighting today within our continuum, we're going to start with our integrated phone talk classroom, so we're going to head down in just a moment. And then we're going to show you some video clips of 1211, a self-entail classroom at South Lawn, a 1214 classroom also at South Lawn, and then lastly, our 811 program, which is brand new, and that's here at Cobra. And you can see in this chart that there's a, what we put in here is the number of students within those classrooms right now. But you see the ratios here, like a 1211 is 12 students, one special education teacher, and one teacher assistant. What you're going to see highlighted is our integrated phone talk with Caitlin Wolk, our special education teacher. She's going to be assisted by Christina Baritano, a teacher assistant. Unfortunately, actually, maybe our general education teacher is out ill. Very suddenly invited today, actually, so hopefully it's not.
So with that, if you'd like to take your note catcher with you and or your phone, if it wasn't with you, we're going to head on down to room 100.
So we are going to get our math brains turned on, and we are going to be working on a new strategy to add numbers, but not just two numbers. We're going to be working on a strategy to help us add three numbers together. So I want you to think about our learning target for today, how I can use make a ten strategy to solve equations with three add-ins. Can we try saying all of that together? I can use make a ten strategy to solve equations with three add-ins. And we're going to say some stuff to make our bodies and our brains feel really ready to do that. So can you guys say, "I got it"? So can you guys say, I got this?
I got this.
I'm smart.
I'm smart.
I can do hard things.
I can do hard things.
Yeah, you can. All right, we're gonna get our brains warmed up. I'm gonna show you some images. So they're not gonna see an actual number right now, but you're gonna see some dots. You're gonna see three different groups of dots. And I want you to think about how many dots are there. Okay, I want you to think about it on your own, and then we're gonna talk about it. How many dots do you see? Keep in your mind.
Thirteen.
Zoe, what'd you get, girl?
Thirteen.
Okay, how did you get thirteen?
I counted when I got to the four, um, it was easy. I did like four, like three.
So what number, what did you see first?
Uh, six.
You saw six, you said, and then you saw four?
Yeah.
And what did you know that was?
Thirteen.
Well, six and four, are they thirteen? What are they? That's ten. So you saw these two come together to make ten, and these three extras down here, and your brain said thirteen. Did anybody else see something in a different way or use a different strategy to figure this out? Finley, what did you do?
I like stayed with six and then like the four, but then I had two more and then the one more. I counted up that six plus six equals twelve.
Oh.
So that one, and if you put one more, that makes thirteen.
That's an interesting way. So Finley saw this group of six, and her brain thought, I know that six and six go together to make a twelve. That's our double, right? So she's made two groups of six in her brain, added one more, and got the same answer that Zoe did, using it in a different way. Awesome job. Okay, let's try another one.
It's a little bit more.
Hmm, this one is different. This one's a little different.
Seven and seven.
Keep it in your brain. Just think right now. Hey, turn to a partner and share what you noticed and how you guys see it.
I saw fourteen. I saw seven because that's a six and it's missing one. It would be eighty-five, like that.
Seven.
Good game.
All right. All right, let's freeze. Mia's hand was right up after she got done talking to her partner. Mia, what did you do to figure this out?
So, um, so, um, when I saw.
Did you see one of the groups together first?
Yeah.
What did you see first?
Um, I saw six. And then when I took away that one at the bottom, it was just six.
So Mia's saying, I noticed that each of these groups were almost six without that one extra, right? And Mia, did you know that six plus six is what? Well, the total is fourteen, but six plus six is twelve, right? And then we add those extra ones. Thirteen, fourteen. That was a great way to see it. I did not see it that way. All right, let's try one more. I heard you have some different ones too. I wanna try another one now. Okay, so think first. Share with a partner for ten seconds.
I saw fourteen.
Fourteen. Oh, yeah. Well, ten plus four equals fourteen. Oh, yeah. Well, how?
Okay, back up here. I saw some hands go up pretty quickly. Kate, what did you do? How many dots did you see?
I saw six and six, and I knew that was twelve. And then I saw two more, and I'm like, um, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Beautiful. Kate noticed. Again, there's this connection with doubles. She put these two together, knows that six and six is twelve. Then there's those two extras, and that twelve plus two is fourteen.
But I knew three plus two equals four.
With that one's place.
Twelve plus two equals fourteen.
Beautiful job. I see Finley's brain matching with your way. Did you have a different way, Tessa? What did you do?
I saw the six and then the two, and then I counted on three and three.
Great. That's another great strategy, that counting on strategy. So Tessa said, I saw the six and the two, and I knew that was eight. And then she counted on from there. Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Great ways, guys. Awesome. So this is getting our brains warmed up to think about a new strategy when we're grouping numbers together to make adding three numbers easy. So I want you to think about this. I'm gonna show you some equations. And I want you to, when you know the answer to them, say them out loud. Okay? It's gonna kind of be quick, but you got it. All right, what about seven plus five?
Thirteen.
Thir-
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. Good. Seven plus five, twelve. What about this one?
Thirteen.
Twelve.
Thirteen.
Uh, um.
Hmm. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Thirteen. I heard thirteen pop out there. Okay, what about this one?
Seventeen.
What do you guys think? Do you agree with Callan? Did you check Callan?
Seventeen.
Stop, Kate checked. He's right. Seventeen. All right, we're gonna change to some different ones. I want you guys to see how you do with these. Are you ready?
Twelve.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Eleven.
Eighteen.
Okay. Chat with a friend. Which equations were, hang on, which equations were easier to solve? When you saw equations that had a partner of ten or equations that did not have a partner of ten?
Ten.
Had a partner.
Yeah. Back to me. I agree. I heard it in you. I could see it in your thinking brains. When we got to those ten equation partners, you guys were saying it really quick, which is really great because that's why the strategy is so awesome to use. When we can make a partner of ten and add those extra ones, our brain can solve equations even faster by making those connections. So what we're gonna do is we are gonna look at a story problem. I'm gonna give you a clipboard in a second. And we're gonna look at a word problem to explore solving equations with three numbers. But I just wanna mention that you can tell stories for math in all different ways. We're gonna be using a word problem today. Maybe another day we'll try something different like telling stories with puppets. Have you ever seen a puppet story be told before?
Yeah.
No.
Well, we will try it sometime. It's another cool way to tell stories and solve different problems, whether they're math or friendship problems or real word problems. But today, I'm gonna give you one with a clipboard. I want you guys to take a peek at the story and then read it together.
I know, I know, I know.
There you go. Do you have a pencil?
I hope I get it.
Put our name on it?
Yeah, you can put your name on it. Ow, sorry, honey. There you go, dude.
There it is.
There you go, honey. It's sorry. I'm sorry. There you go, girl. So we're telling stories not with puppets. We're gonna tell stories in a word problem. And here is what it says. You guys can follow along on your paper or up here. Asha makes five puppets. Jay makes four puppets. Tomas makes six puppets. How many puppets do they make? Now, I know you probably already have ideas going in your head because we had a great warm-up. But what I want you to do is give this a try on your own. If I wanna know how many puppets Asha and Jay and Tomas made all together, how can you solve to find that answer? Take about a minute or two to start some work. Tessa's all ready to work. Figuring out the answer to this word problem. That's great. That's great. All right, now I'm gonna set it up. Asha makes five, Jay makes four, Tomas makes six. Mia, what do you think? Equations, some circle drawings, ten frames. Okay, that's a great one to set up. Right, turn to a friend. And if you're still working or you're done, share what you're doing or what you did. And in a minute, I'm gonna have someone come up and share with me what you did. And turn to anyone near you. Maybe Zoe, can you turn on and chat with Tessa and Mia and Finley?
I did a circle drawing. I did, I did like, uh,
I knew.
I knew, um, yes. I knew.
What is it, yes? Oh, you got the, you think you got the correct answer. Which ones were different? Yeah. What did you guys do?
You did a yes and a no, and you crossed the yes.
Nice. All right, good job, guys. I see some really nice work going on down here.
And if five plus five.
Okay, did anybody wanna share, um, what two numbers you decided to work with first from the word problem? Because we do see that there's those three numbers that we had to figure out come together. What two numbers did you think about first? Tessa?
I thought about five and four.
Okay, did you set up an addition equation with them, I saw?
I did a little circle drawing.
Okay, so you used five and four for a circle drawing first. So it kind of looked like this. I'm looking. And then what did you get?
And then I got ten.
Well, you, what did you do after you did the five and the four?
After the five and the four, I got some white circles that I put in half of it.
Can I show everybody this? Because I think that you're, you did such a great job. And I wanna make sure everybody can see our friends that are on the ground here. So Tessa was thinking, I'd like to use a circle drawing. And it looked like you used a ten frame a little bit too, Tessa. When we've used them in the past, we've only had two numbers. So Tessa did something kind of creative here. Because we use usually open circles, you know, in the colored in circles. And Tessa did something I've not seen yet before. Tessa used open circles for the number five, it looks like she was saying. Then she used those colored in circles for what number? For the number four. And then what are these last ones that have half a circle filled in? Where'd you get that from?
Um, I was just placing.
Where did you get that amount from? I know I took it. I'm sorry. It was Tomas had the six, right? Yeah, and then she saw, she represented Tomas' with those half colored in circles with the six. And you got a total of fifteen. That was great when you counted them up. Anybody try something different? What'd you do, Kate?
So I knew that five plus five equals ten.
Okay.
And, um,
Do you wanna come up and show us on the board?
Yeah.
Here, Tessa, I'll get that back to you. You can come up, grab that marker, girly. There you go.
So I knew five plus five. Five.
Yeah.
Equals ten.
Okay.
And then I knew five plus five plus six equals sixteen.
Okay.
And, um,
So one of our add-ins, oh, sorry.
And one is smaller.
Oh, yeah, you're taking it away. Okay.
Five is smaller than four. Um, so then I knew sixteen is less than less than fifteen. So I knew it was fifteen.
That was, that was an amazing way to think about it too. So you kind of created a ten equation that you knew, and you recognized one of the add-ins was one more than given, and you got one more in your total. And you kind of recognized that those equal sides didn't quite match for the numbers in the equation, and you switched them up. That was really cool. That was some, that was some deep thinking, Kate. All right, I wanna just take a moment because I saw one friend, and I just wanna talk about it really quick. I saw one friend notice that there were three of the numbers. Out of the three numbers, two of them came together and made a ten. And if you peek over there, I put a little poster up for us that those are all the different ways that we could make a ten. So this friend noticed, five didn't help me. I'm leaving five alone. And that four and that six came together to make a ten. Then our brains could see really quickly, like in our warm-up activity, that ten and five are, it, the total is then fifteen. You don't have to whisper it. You can say it proud. So to answer our question, how many puppets did all of those kids make together? Everybody?
Fifteen.
Fifteen puppets. Beautiful job. Okay, I want us to focus on that make a ten strategy. So I have a game set up for us to play. Before we do, what do you guys think? Do you think that finding partners for ten helps us add three numbers? Kind of helped us add three numbers or didn't really help us add three numbers? What do you guys think? You see, most, most, some have some friends up. I'm hoping that you think that finding number partners for ten helps you add numbers easier and gets to the answer a little bit faster. I saw most thumbs up. Someone was like, I might use a different strategy. And that's okay. We're learning them all so we can pick ones that work for us. So let's practice with a game. Are you ready?
Yeah.
We kind of talked about it when we were sitting in here getting ready. And I will bring over the supplies for us.
And you.
I know that I taught you guys. So I'm gonna have you get started playing it. And if somebody wants to come up that wants to hear about what you're playing, do you think that you could be ready to tell them about it? I think so. I think you could. So I'm gonna get our partners together. Tessa and Finley, can you guys come right here? Here are your game pages. You can just put this new one right on top of that. Okay? And let's have Mia and Kate. You guys can work right here in the middle. And here are your game boards. That was a nice job. And Zoe and Callan, you guys can come over here.
Uh, this one's,
Oh, I gave you the one we practiced. I did, but I'll pick it up.
Wait, hold on. Put them back down.
So remember, guys, we're gonna shake up those cubes. We're gonna look to see if anyone make a partner of, oh, wait, hang on. I forgot the important thing. When we fill up our partners of ten totals, all those key numbers, you get to go over and ring the bell. Okay? All right.
The cheek would be,
Kate, how we collect the dice.
So five plus five, now we gotta find one.
I got a good one. How I did five plus five.
Okay.
I got a good one.
Six numbers.
This.
Okay, let's try that again. That one is out of the game.
So we roll it and then it's six.
It equals ten.
Fill that out, and then do you have to write it down? Are you looking for your pencil? Your plan. You can take one from there. They're all ready to go. Okay. There it is. All right, Tessa, you're up.
I charged. Easy. Okay, so I, make a good shake. And then five.
Did you find any that make a ten?
So it's six. You got a good shake.
You gotta make a ten first. So girls, it looks like you got one of the totals already. Don't forget to fill it in at the top. I have red. I have more.
My, my friend's all right.
That's what happened to Kate and Callan. I have more over here. We had a lot of the recent.
Ah, look at.
Well, you are.
Sorry. Found that right away.
Now you get to put no, put out.
It was underneath. It was. It was underneath, it was hiding. Happens daily. I know, good to see you. Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh, that's unbelievable. I know when I like saw one of the other things you were in, I was like, oh my gosh. Yes, I'm glad you did. So great, so great. Jackson's doing, he's doing good. Is he still playing?
Okay, okay, I'm embarrassed. Okay, I'll, I'll make you see a thousand.
I would love to see, I think of all those videos you can learn though. I could, that was just that still like sticks in my face. It was there, I saw it. Yes, I would love that.
Oh, I would too.
I'd be like a creep.
Um, ten plus, um, six plus four plus, six plus four plus, um.
You had all fours last one, boy. Okay, okay, right. Sorry, thank you. Well, if you get it, you have to pick a different. To fill in all of this space. Alright, remember, guys, I told you it was gonna feel like a shorter math time? And I'm so sorry, but everybody gets the chance to ring the bell before we do our last little closure because everyone worked really hard. And we will play the game again. Okay, so for our last job tonight, I'm gonna put a post-it on your clipboard. And I just want you to write down one equation on your own that uses make a ten. Okay? If you get stuck thinking of one on your own, you can maybe pick one out that you got from the game. Whichever one you pick, put it up on that, on that board, post it up there and write your name on it too, okay?
You're not allowed to use that marker.
Oh, I'm gonna give you a post-it, girl. Guys, down here, cause I'm gonna put it on, on a post-it and then you can put the post-it up there. There we go. I know the markers are fun to use. So you can put one of your equations from the game or one that you think of on your own, write up on our board. Okay, guys? So your name and one of the equations that you came up with from the game. Good job, Mia.
And don't forget to write your name on there. Write your name on there.
Right on here.
I think people are gonna be like.
Yes, yep. Alright, and friends, when you're all done, you can bring your clipboards right over to my, my desk over there, okay, guys? And we can say thank you to everybody for coming in. It was just if we had some extra. I like to over-prepare, you know?
First graders, as you're finishing up, as you're all finishing up, I just wanted to say thank you so much for letting us come in and see some of your learning tonight. Did you have fun?
Yes.
I know that all of our adults in here had fun. Thanks so much for coming in to hang out with us today. Would you like to join us for some cookies in the hallway?
Yes.
What do you think? Mom and Dad? I wanna thank you all for coming this evening. It's really special night for all of us to be able to highlight what our kids are doing in the classrooms every day. So thank you for coming tonight and your support and there are plenty of cookies for awesome. Um, if the kiddos clean up in here, we'll be able to mingle and work with.
So as we get settled, um, first, I just have to say like how fortunate I think we both are to be able to showcase the great work that happens. Um, I turned to a parent, his child was part of the math lesson and I said, I'm, I'm happy you can be here, cause this is honestly what this looks like every day. Um, so it's just, and it's great to be able to show you it as well. Um, so as we settle back in, um, we started talking about the support within the continuum and the kind of things that you might see to ensure that both our general education and, um, special education students reach success. So we just wanted to give you some time to turn and talk with an elbow partner about any of those supports that you may have, uh, seen through the observation in that lesson. We'll just give you a minute or two. So about twenty seconds. And would you like to highlight, you know, something that they have seen within the classrooms, or the presentations we've seen so far? Yeah, that title, I absolutely agree. Thank you. Um, we were talking about the use of modeling and the structure routine in both situations. The students knew exactly what to expect, where it was going, what they needed to do. But especially in the math, even though the content was different, there was still a rhythm and an expectation to the lesson. And then the whole closure of the kids actually applying their own and taking it up board. Um, and the differentiation in that because they could break down one that they had their game, or they could come up with their own. So if they, so that everyone had access to answering the question.
And I'm trying to do one, is like, yeah, able to recognize it with them. I said, if you keep your attention to that.
Differentiation standpoint, we were just talking about, um, how after the math lesson, she checked in to say, which strategy worked best for you? And that also builds her, you know, repertoire with each student of what is gonna work well in the future.
We're talking about the same thing. Overall, in, in both groups, like how did you gauge the kids really were, like they were very invested in missing, they were very respectful? And they integrated each other's differences and same thing. They all got to the same place, but it was okay different in a different way. Well, that's a great start. I hope that as you order the supports, you go over your presentation. So at this time, we're gonna shift to some of our video presentations. And we're gonna start with Ms. Totsline Classroom. It's a twelve one one classroom, self-contained at San Juan. Twelve special education students, one special education teacher and one teacher assistant. Um, and today, what you'll see, um, are students, students within this classroom, their primary need is academic. Although they may also need support with social, emotional and the building of executive functioning skills. Um, and this is about a five-minute clip that you're, you're gonna watch.
Add. Put it together. Add. Who thinks they can tell me what the beginning sound of add is? What did you hear at the beginning? Raise your hand if you know, raise your hand. Remember, not the letter, the sound. Adeline, what sound? Ah, good, we heard that ah sound in the beginning. Okay, let's get our arm ready again. I'm gonna give you a new word. This word has three sounds in it. Ready, Adeline? Okay, show me you're ready. There we go. Alright, we're going to do the word dog. Ready, let's sound it out together. Dog.
Be able to keep it. Okay, let me play against you. Alright, here we go. Ready?
Alright, so we're gonna look at this paper. I'm gonna, we're gonna learn two new, um, hard words or words that we have to know by heart.
People use it to, when they sleep.
Can't really sound out, we might be able to sound out harder. You see in a sentence, I see.
Oh, good one. Let's go over your word you have so far. Very good, alright, my turn? Um, it.
No.
What is it? Nice job. I like the way you look. Remember, we can't, we can only sound out uh, r. Remember when we look at the word? We put that heart around here to tell us that we can only have uh, r. Those two stay together and they make that one sound.
Her. Is her a real word? Yeah, it is. Let me use it in a sentence so that we can try it together. Um, I went to her house. Okay, does anything, anyone think they can use the word her in a sentence? Jasmine? Good. I see her bracelet. That's a nice full sentence. Josiah?
I see, I. Ah, her, ah, her house.
I saw.
I saw her house.
Good job, that's a nice full sentence. Owen, how about you?
I saw her dog.
Good, I saw her dog. Adeline, how about you?
I saw her.
Good.
Yeah, there you go.
Good job, guys. We're gonna clean up our stuff. We're gonna switch groups. Good job, Dylan. Thanks for putting that away, man.
Alright, my turn, good job.
Alright, I'm gonna take Mr. Ezra next.
I have Warren over here. And I have Dylan.
What's that word? Trim, nice job. Nice job using it in a sentence. You got it, okay, Menden? Thanks Jasmine for helping.
Right. Very good, that's good. And then there's freeze. Okay, here we go. Today, we're gonna read about some what? Now who would love that? Reading about hens. Abram, he loves his hens, right? Alright, so let's see, let's put this away. Alright, now. What do you think, this is our title, hen. What do you think it's about? You think that they're gonna talk about hens having babies? Oh, that'll be interesting. Let's look at our words that are gonna be in the story. You know what that one is? Just like we did with our cubes.
Will you sound that out for me? Use your arm to show me. How would I sound that? Boons. Boons. Good job. That's the what sound you do here at the end? Good job. How about it slips? Good job, what sound? S, what sound does s make? Good job.
Great snippet of what you're seeing, you know, going on in the classrooms. Um, and it really is a nice reflection of the day-to-day interactions within the classroom. The next video that we're gonna see is of Mrs. Tros's classroom, which is a twelve one four. And in this video, you're gonna see Mrs. Tros working, um, with her students on a myriad of skills. Um, I'm gonna ask that you specifically, specifically look for the varied modes of language and communication skills, functional adaptive skills in school readiness skills. Students in a classroom like a twelve one four may also use this retrial, um, teaching within their, um, within their day-to-day interaction.
It is sunny, just like it is outside today. Hi Tyler. How are you feeling today? Oh, great. Are you excited about the weekend? Yes, me too. Hi Iz.
Hi Iz.
Say hi Tros. How are you feeling today? Nice, I love that you feel happy. Hi Nora. Hi, Mrs. Tros. How are you feeling today? I feel good.
I feel good.
Good, I love that. I love your outfit today, Nora. You look very pretty. Hi, Lovey.
Hi.
Hi, Mrs. Tros.
Hi, Tros.
How are you feeling today?
I feel great.
Great.
I feel excited.
Oh, you're excited? What are you excited about today?
I'm excited that it's Friday.
You're excited that it's Friday? These are the days. These are not days.
Correct.
Alright, so yesterday was? Hold on one second. Yesterday was Thursday. Yeah, yesterday was Thursday. You think you know? Today is? Full sentence.
Friday. Today is Friday.
Wow. Remember where this is? Izzy, great job. Friday. Yeah. The month is December. How many syllables? Three, yep. Yes, there is a snowman. Lovey, do you remember why there's a snowman? What's coming up? The first day of winter, yep. Less than a week away. Alright, let's talk about the date. So we're gonna start by counting and we're gonna start with this number here. Nora, what number do we need to start with? One. Alright, here we go. Ready?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Lovey, how am I gonna skip count these groups of ten? Am I gonna skip count by ones, fives, or tens? Tens, yep, cause I have bundles of ten. I'm gonna go first and then you can help. Nora. severe. Nor, severe. Ready? Okay, here we go. My turn first. Ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. You ready to help? Ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. Don't forget, we also have to add these. Sixty-one. Good job, Izzy. Sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five. Very nice job. We've been in school for sixty-five days, everybody. What do you think?
It's sunny.
It is sunny today. I see those, look at the leaves. They're blowing around. What else is the weather today? What else do we see going on outside? Do you think that it is snowy or windy?
Windy.
Yeah. It's a sunny and windy day. We've had three windy days in a row, everybody. It's been a windy week. Thank you. Nice job. That's good. Alright, go take a seat. Good job, Izzy. Um, alright, Nor, what should we wear on our feet? Snow boots or rain boot? Or I'm sorry, snow boots? Wait, wait, wait. Snow boots or sneakers? My fault, honey.
Sneakers.
Sneakers. Yeah, I think it's a sneaker day today, too. Right. What words have we been working on this week?
Stop.
Stop and?
Go.
Go. Very good. Remember, when we were talking about the gingerbread man, he was running away from different animals and the old man and the old lady. So today, what we can do is we can play our gingerbread man game that we talked about earlier this week. Remember? We have some different actions that we can do. Do you need headphones, Nor? What's going on, honey? Good? Oh, I'm sorry. What's one action that we might have to do?
Rock.
Rock. What's another action?
Clap.
This is the word clap. Yep, let's do practice. Nice and quiet. Perfect. We might also have to march.
March.
Why?
The gingerbread man. Jump, jump as fast as you can. You can't catch me. I'm the gingerbread man. Alright, Izzy. Are you ready? On your mark. Get set.
Go.
Cool. Alright, everybody, jump, jump, jump. And what are you telling people? To?
Stop, stop.
Izzy. Good job. Alright, tell people it's time to?
Go.
Go. Nice job. It's time to?
March gingerbread man. Well, march, march. I'm the gingerbread man.
Okay, Lovey, are we ready? Everybody stand up. Listen to Lovey.
Go.
Remember, just marching.
Stop. Go. Stop. Go. Stop.
All done. Nice job, Lovey. Very good directions, Lovey.
So in that classroom, you can see a pretty high level of differentiation happening. You see a lot of movement. Um, you saw the use of music, visuals, and a lot of modeling, too. And also, the use of different communication devices. So the last videos in this series around the continuum is highlighting our 811 classroom. And this is Mrs. Wagner's classroom here at Colebrook. This is the first year of the program. So while some students in this classroom may struggle academically, the social, emotional needs of the students are really the greatest area of need. So students may demonstrate a greater level of difficulty with self-regulation, emotional management, and peer relationships. And because of that, they require a higher level of individualized support in smaller group instruction. And in this video, you're gonna see clips of the classroom with Mrs. Wagner kind of explaining some of the pieces around the classroom that really make it more unique.
In this classroom, we have multiple grade levels like other classrooms. But our students have pretty, pretty strong academic skills, cognitive skills, very close to a grade level, and age-appropriate skills. And where their deficits fall are mainly in like social, emotional aspects. So they might have deficits in their ability to regulate uncomfortable emotions. For a lot of our kiddos, things might feel, like problems might feel a lot bigger in their reality than they, or their perception than they are in reality. So I think what makes us difference is our focus on the instruction being in that focused area and really being able to take the time to build school readiness skills and regulation skills that they all need. These kiddos have, you know, like I said, it's been identified that they might have areas of need as far as their regulation. When they feel uncomfortable, their behavior might reflect that. And they might need a lot of one-on-one support to, to regulate in a classroom setting. So a lot of our instruction is focused on social, emotional aspects such as, like we've done a lot on circle of control and what's inside your circle of control versus what's outside. Some, like mindfulness activities. We focus on that every morning. And self-regulation skills. The new program is so powerful because we can really take the time to get to know these kids and know exactly where their needs are and what they need to be successful in a school setting. So our ratios are a little bit smaller. The relationships that we've been able to build with them so quickly is really powerful. And that in turn helps them trust us. And when we're delivering that social, emotional instruction, they're really able to like trust the process and respond to it more effectively. Just because of, of what our classroom looks like and what the setting itself looks like.
So what you saw at the end of the clip there, the table with some of the different fidgets on it is part of the behavior management system. The classroom uses flex box. So kids are positively reinforced all day long for many different, many different items. And it's just acts of kindness that they might do. And then at the end of the week, they can kind of turn those flex box in for something that's tangible. In addition, students have individualized behavior contracts that they work on. And they set those goals on their own with the help of Mrs. Wagner.
The last part of our presentation this evening is what we centered around the well-being of self and community. Earlier this evening, you had an opportunity to see our community circle. We're gonna move now into our, our buddy program, which is a part of our current curriculum as well. It's unique to each individual building because you have an opportunity for students to work across the curriculum. So this is memory. I actually have to have, have you go back onto your email. This evening, you received two emails prior to our meeting, sorry. And you also have some handy-dandy new headphones in front of you that you can utilize as you watch the videos this evening.
So we have two different videos. One features Ms. Johnson and Mrs. Ferrari. Mrs. Ferrari teaches second grade here at Colebrook and Ms. Johnson teaches third grade. And the focus of that video is on social, emotional learning within the curriculum. So you'll see students within the buddy program, so second graders working with third graders on strategies that they might use when they're feeling overwhelmed or frustrated. The second video features Mrs. DiAmato, a third grade teacher at Briarwood, and Mrs. Andrea Copan, a first grade teacher at Briarwood. And you're gonna see that academics really featured within this video. It's not, the content that you see is not part of the curriculum, which is why we wanted to highlight it actually, because they've used the structure of the curriculum. But they love the structure so much that they're starting to use it to help support academics.
So we will ask that you watch the opposite video of your elbow partner so that you have an opportunity to talk a little bit about what you see on the video. So you and your partner are watching different videos. Good. We might finish up at about a minute difference in time, but as you finish up with your elbow partner, you want to kind of talk about what you see and how the structure of the buddy program kind of ties together whether you're doing the social emotional learning or the academic.
Okay, so we're glad you had an opportunity to talk with a partner. We love these videos because they highlight the social emotional learning curriculum. In the buddy program itself, but they do it in very different ways because one is really centered on SEL and the other is centered on academics. And it's just a lot of credit to the teachers for implementing the program. A lot of them have done this on their own. It's the first year of implementation. And the buddy program is kind of the extension of the curriculum, so it just goes to show you the kind of impact that that's already having on teachers and students. So we're going to move to just revisiting our learning targets from the beginning of the presentation before we conclude. So we had three learning targets that we started with. I can understand how our continuum of services supports academic, social, emotional, communication, sensory, and physical needs of students receiving specialized services. I can reflect on the impact that the caring school curriculum is having on our students. And lastly, I can see how our new writing math curriculum engages all students through dialogue and higher level thinking. So we want to give you an opportunity to kind of reflect on those three learning targets in thinking through the lens of the presentations and the videos that you watched tonight. And we'd love to just hear some feedback about what resonated with you around these three learning targets.
I'll drop right to the bottom. You can see in the math lesson, the collaboration among the students, the bouncing ideas off each other, working with partners and getting that real-time feedback. It ties right into the...
I think one of the students in the community circle really talked about this, I get one about the caring at school, our parent school curriculum, and she said, "I'd like to carry other people's voices." And it's me, that second grader to say that. It's meaningful to them and they are appreciating that time to share, so that's great.
That diversity was in the classroom, running the conversation that are occurring in those community circles.
Fantastic, yes.
Especially in the videos that we have just seen, Justin and my partners who were talking about, it's so great to see sort of like a silo is being broken down between, you know, grade levels or, you know, where they are economically or socially or emotionally and really just bringing these together. And as we have kids too that are sort of older and in elementary school, it's so nice to see that it really, this concept is sticking and carrying through. And it's so nice to see them implementing, us implementing this at such a young age and having it in the right hands and seeing them carry that through. And it really, it's just nice to see them being just so kind and supportive of one another. And I'm saying like how they are of the work they're doing and of the praise that they're getting and not just from their teachers, but from their peers. And that's really, that's really nice.
Yeah, and also I feel like it speaks to how we've kind of built a whole community here.
Yes.
I just love how, you know, it just shows the talent of our teachers, how amazing they really engage students to make them collaborators from such an early age. It's wonderful. It's something they're going to take for the rest of their lives. It's going to be able to communicate, speak to each other, make connections.
They universalize connections. I see adults doing it, you know, within our own leadership team and within our own teacher teams. It's great to just be able to communicate something with the mothers as well. Our teachers are true go-getters. They really, Dr. Johnson has said this about our leadership team, and I'll say the same about our teachers, is that we really, they get something and go with it, but they then go to the next level with it because they just want to continuously do more with the different resources that we have. So we're really fortunate. We've got amazing educators at our return team.
One final fun little optimistic closure that we wanted to do with you this evening is we would like you to create a phrase or a word, little Twitter, formerly known Twitter now X, that represents our presentation for you this evening. So a word or a phrase that really represents our presentation for you all tonight. Our famous one is "all means all" in much of our way. And truly, I hope tonight's presentation is demonstrating that, that all really does mean all within our consciousness.
Do you want to share?
Sure, yeah.
So mine would be, I have four. From the top one, I would just say, "thank you." And it really starts with our executive leadership staff taking the board's ideas and our mission and our goals, our strategic plan, and implementing that, and then passing them down to the leadership team, where then you guys take it out to the teachers, and we're seeing it live in the classroom. But also, thank you to the teachers that allow us to come in and see them doing their part. That's not an easy thing to say, "hey, we're going to bring seven people in the classroom at six o'clock." And thanks to the parents and really thank you to the students, because I always tell them, "it's the best part." But thank you.
Great, thank you.
My word of the engagement, you know, as an educator, I know, has a effect. Students will not learn if they're not engaged. And I saw so much to gain to them. It's really wonderful.
Mine would be better together. Every piece was better because they were working together in a way of community and complementing each other. It was better together.
I'm sort of thinking, we are one. Everybody was just so, so supportive and...
I was at caring school.
Same, community. That bound a lot of, it gives so much community building.
What makes me think of welcome, nurture, inspire. I mean, when you look at the different experiences we saw, you know, we've done it different ways. We saw our students being welcomed, welcoming one another, right? And I thought of Rosa's comment, maybe some of our experiences in learning where, you know, there was an anxiety sometimes to speak out in class, right? Or to engage at that level, but to see our students so early on, growing that confidence and their voice is just fantastic. So I'm nurturing that, obviously, for now, and not only inspiring them, but inspiring us to continue to build that.
Let's tackle our K3 team. I want to thank you for all of your support that you provide to us. Everyone around this table is amazing with your level of support. Thank you. And I also want to make sure to thank Jay Conan, who has really helped to put our videos together and put our show together for tonight. So thank you all for...
This was wonderful.
Any questions? Now, if there are questions or wonderings that you had as you were using your notebook today, we're happy to address anything. Well, if you should have any questions after you leave this evening, please don't hesitate to reach out to either one of us, but thank you again for your time tonight and during the rest of your...
Thank you.
We're going to leave the flexible seating for you.
We may have to reconsider our seating arrangement. Great job.
Just thank you again to Ms. Spitz and Dr. Farrell for this wonderful presentation. I just want to echo what John said. Thank you to all of our students and families for coming out on this blistering old January night to join us here and everyone who made this possible, but also our food service staff, delicious drinks. I'd wrestle out of the first grader's hands.
Thanks, Mark.
Any, any almost lost.
Almost, it was close, but I came for a reminder.
Now we just have some snow out there. I think that would care.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the review of the minutes. This is a first read of our December 21st, 2023 minutes. And we anticipate voting on these on January, January 18th meeting. If there are any questions or comments on the minutes, please reach out to Ms. Leslie. Next on the agenda is public comments, and there is no one signed in for public comments yet, but we do welcome and encourage the, our community to join us at our Board of Education meetings, and we will have public comments at each one of those. It's an opportunity for that. Next is the reports of the superintendent, Dr. Spitz.
Sir, while I was, again, starting out tonight, I said a few words, but, you know, every time I look at that, we had joined the district five years ago, I think of, you know, just how well our predecessors, some people in the room, many people in the room captured our identity at that time with our mission, and how we've really taken that, ran to that, and ran with it, and we continue to take back to that. As far as the driver for it works, so just kudos to everybody, as we've said, there's so many people that have been involved in that over the years. And our folks at the classroom level, at building levels, everyone's in their period of tourism. It's just filled with pride to see that on display tonight. So with that, we start by asking ourselves, how are all the children? And please report that the children are well. We continue to, you know, find different ways to engage them and support them, as we saw tonight. A couple of things that I included from our social media highlights. One thing I'll start with, kind of in the middle right there. This is tomorrow, actually, no, excuse me, over to the right. I think we had informed you that we have some media coming in tomorrow, and they're going to be interviewing our IHES student tech crew. So this was a pretty cool idea that Dan Fullerton sparked when he was here. And it's just continued to grow, and Casey Wacker did a great job of picking that torch up and running with it. But we also have some staff like Angelo Colazo that's very intimately involved with that. I think Rich Jones is involved with that too. Jake Conan is involved with that as well. And so, you know, it's a viable career pathway. These students are receiving hands-on experience with that. And they're bringing a beautiful service for the district, you know, as far as supporting our one-to-one devices and our schools. Kudos to everybody involved in that. To the left of that, we have the Rotary Interact Club. So this is a newer club, if you remember. This started like middle of last year. And so, again, we talked about service learning around the holidays, and this is a group that was able to secure a number of donations for public resource, for community resources and shelters around the area, and they were able to donate those. So beautiful partnership. Appreciate the work by the advisors to support that. Mr. Marshall's kind of a key player in that. Then all the way to the left is kind of a fun thing. At Rogers, they had a spirit week, and one of the things they did was a door tech grading contest. And it was a way that they kind of capitalized on that to welcome Mr. DiVerdino, as he was onboarding prior to the break. So you can see the teacher Miss Corcoran there, her face, and that was her door, working with her students. They had a lot of fun with that. You know, as we talk about social emotional learning, building cultural community, those things are important in doing that. So pretty cool stuff. And all the way down to the right there is one of our teachers, Mary Johnson. Again, it was funny, I was going around to some of the staff today, and they were celebrating pajama day, right? She was kind of celebrating that, because she was putting it out there with the students. But staff member said to me, she goes, "we got to rethink this pajama day. It's great to have the day before break, but I think we need to add one the day after." I couldn't agree more. So with that, I do want to give a really hearty shout-out to our Office of Public Information. What I have here is a landing page, our new website. So this was most of the year in the making, honestly. They started to investigate different options at the beginning of the year, you know, budget for that, Mr. Brennan. Then they started to make the transition behind the scenes, and they've been working on that straight through, and we were happy to launch that after the holiday break. So we've already received a number of, you know, really positive comments on that. It's just crisp, it's clean, it's really streamlined. Mr. DiVerdica really loves it because it looks great on a mobile device. So I jump about that because that was very important for us and him. But I want to give a special thanks to Jeff DiVerdica, you know, kind of in help with that as a director. Ms. Riddaspar, who is his assistant. Then we brought in Ms. Hartman, who was the prior assistant who had retired. She came in and did some consulting and was supporting that. And also, I've mentioned to you folks, you know, the staff spotlight. This was Jeff kicked this off, brought it to me. Thought it was a great way to, you know, for him to promote what we're doing in our classrooms, but on a larger scale, building community around the district. And it's just been a lot of fun to see. You know, you can see here with Ashley Romano, the head cook over at Rogers. It's just, you get this personal connection with them because they share about their experience and really their connection, their why, you know, what they do. And a little bit of the background, so I just wanted to say thanks to Jeff for doing that. Congratulations to everybody that's received one. So for this part, I have just two updates, because I keep, you know, a really great presentation here that we're just stepping off of, and then this trainer's got a great presentation that's going to follow here a little bit. But one thing I want to update you on, if I could have Mr. Honen help you out. So at the last public comment, we had some folks come in and talk about UPK. So I just want to report back that I had the chance to connect with two out of three people personally, left a message for the third. Really great conversations to hear about their perspective. You know, a lot of dialogue about kind of what you had heard with the comments. And talked about a lot about what we were doing. The timing couldn't be better. One of the things that they said was, like, where's the information, you know? And we're in year two. Obviously, we're learning as we go, and we're building things. Just me and her staff have done a great job of just investigating, understanding the whole process, structure, you know, working with Mr. Brennan, funding, recruiting, all these things, right? And so, again, the timing couldn't be better because with this new website, we've created a kind of landing page for UPK. This is the information that we just published this week, as far as timeline that folks can expect for this year. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that was available, and then we will put down to the rest of that a really useful Q and A. A lot of that was taken from what we heard and from the experience we've had over the last two years and what people may want to know. And there's different pathways that people are going to be able to find that on the website. You know, it's on our parents' community right there, you know, pre-kindergarten. They can look under registration, or they can look under curriculum instructions. So we've also set up a meeting with one of local providers. You know, there were some questions. I shared with you folks, there was a letter that was left on the podium for one of the staff members. There were some ideas and some questions. So we thought it would be a great idea. We've worked very closely with them, very tightly with them throughout the year. It was an opportunity to just talk about that and swap ideas. The other piece of this that I just want to note with you is, you know, there was a question around, hey, what's the future look like, right? So we've been talking about that, and this is important. You'll be engaged with this. We've got to work some things through facility planning, but we need to create a backstop, right? So we went out to the public and said, "hey, look, we want to propose this proposition to purchase the Tiger Hill site." One of the major factors of that was to increase the classrooms for pre-K, okay? So now is the next step, really is looking at that and kind of anchoring in and deciding on the date of when we want to launch those classrooms, and then working from that, kind of mapping that out backwards from there, what we need to do to get ourselves to that. So I look forward to presenting more of that back to you through those processes. So, Mr. Honen, the second thing I wanted to just report back to the board on tonight's meeting. I shared with you, Ms. Metrus was copying it, doing it to a parent who reached out to me about DCA funding, okay? So our DCA program is just fantastic. It's, I mean, you can talk to anybody in the region, and we are one of the leading... It's, I mean, you can talk to anybody in the region, and we are one of the leading, if not the leading, program, you know, as far as a White House district in the region. And so, you know, you look over the years, and we have consistently sent a number of students to not only regionals, but then to states. This year, we have thirty students going to state tournament, which is actually in Rochester every year, down in the convention center, and then to nationals, right? And it's been over the last ten years, anywhere from, you know, a handful, four, five, up to eleven, or more. And so their question was, where do we stand as a district, you know, with some of the funding with that, okay? And the reference was the conversation we had last year around Odyssey with Mind, right? And if you remember that, we had truly plastic students who worked very hard, and they were able to qualify for their international tournament in Odyssey with Mind. Now, with these types of clubs, when we have that level of achievement, they've got to turn around, and they've got to make plans to commit to these large-scale events pretty quickly. And lots of times, they're, you know, last year, the national duck tournament was in Orlando. This year, it's in California. So you're talking about families who want to send their students there, turning around and, you know, trying to raise that money pretty quickly. So, again, last year, working with you folks, you had supported and approved us to send those students Odyssey with Mind to the international competition, and carrying it over. I'd like to recommend that we do that this year for DCA, okay? The other piece of this that Ms. Miga and I have talked about is investigating. When you look at our DCA, and I want to point this out, because it's important, I talked about this with a parent. Over time, it's become such a strong program, that a lot of the project-based learning that they do in the club, they actually work on that as some of the foundational work in some of the courses. So we've talked about this, this has really evolved, the staff have a phenomenal job, in talking about where we stand on that as far as extracurricular versus co-curricular, right? And then thinking about how that view specifically would like to approach that as far as the budget and the finances. So that's going to be an ongoing, you know, conversation. We need to investigate that a little bit more and bring that back to you. But I wanted to note that for you, because that was kind of a point that I talked about with this parent, was, hey, look, when we look at these course listings, these descriptions, it does list, like, you know, for sports marketing up there, you know, it talks about what that course is, and then it says DCA on there as well. So that was their point, is kind of where we're at, that was the point, so. All right? So with that, that's it for my report, like you said, brief, but I open for questions on this, or really anything else.
Next is report of the leadership staff business.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate the slope.
Next is report of the leadership staff construction, Dr. Nelson. Ms. Miga, will be any reports tonight?
There is no reports, but I just want to reiterate some of the pieces that you pulled out about our presentation tonight, specifically around, I think Rosa and Vicky both mentioned sophistication and level of teaching from our, from our staff. You know, and the example that stands out to me was, I mean, all clear, but Bernadette Tomato and Andrea Holben from Briarwood, and just recognizing how they shifted from the more SCL piece to academic, and recognizing that the foundations of good writing is verbalization, and that's, you know, based on lots of research. I feel like I've stood on that soapbox with you before, but, and just, and it then ties back to the SCL, because those first graders being able to talk through it with third graders, they then saw themselves as writers. So I guarantee if they had engaged in that in their own classroom, on their own, they still would have wrote something, but they wouldn't have written as much or been as competent. So that was just one example, so kudos to all of our teachers tonight, through the videos and in person.
Next is report of leadership staff personnel. First read, I want to turn over to Ms. Kramer, just to review what we have.
For a first read for October on January fifteenth, we have the resignation of two teaching assistants, the appointment of a long-term substitute, McNaddick, and a permanent civil service applicant.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? All right, so we will plan on voting on this in two weeks. Next is extracurricular stipends. May I have the recommended resolution?
Be resolved with the extracurricular stipends dated January fourth, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by super teams, schools, and group disposal.
My Mr. Ray, second to my Mr. Connor. Turn it over to Dr. Nelson.
Right, so, I mean, you may feel that you've approved these stipends a number of times throughout the year, because you have, this is a new process for us. And, you know, we're not only working out the timeline, but, you know, also that process, we are pulling up with folks, and we have something that we need to change here on that.
And I hope that your review in Google, there is a change in red on the extracurricular agenda for a change in advisor.
Next is diversity, hiring, and retention.
Sir, so I'm excited for Ms. Kramer to kind of put this all together for you. This is something that she was able to do a part of this with our DEI coalition earlier in the year. And we talked about it, and we felt like it was a good exercise, not only for us, but also for you to experience in here, because we've been doing a lot over a number of years. I think the toughest thing, for me personally, when I look at this, is I think that as a community, and as a board certainly, right, and as a team here across the district, we're absolutely committed to, you know, becoming more diverse with our staffing across the district, with, with supporting retention and increasing our ability to retain a diverse-based staff. But honestly, let us know, okay? And I feel a number of questions about that, right? And so I think it's important for us to take a look at the body of work, what we're doing. And one of the key questions we talked about the last time that we had a presentation about this was the metrics, right? And Ms. Kramer will talk a little bit about this tonight. It's kind of squishy, it's squishy data, because it's, we talked about the tool that we use to collect that data, right? And then, you know, we weren't collecting this in the past per se, other than the reporting to the state, right? So we are now, and we're watching that growth over time. But I think, you know, for me, again, as a superintendent, working with you and our people, the focus, and what I'd love to point out here as you're, as you're experiencing this, is really trying to increase and maximize the access for people, right? To these opportunities within the district, focusing on removing the barriers, you know, being a little more conscious, identifying those things, and minimizing those, reducing those openly. Thinking about inherent bias that we carry, and really striving to ensure that the processes are equitable, and that we're supporting our people in the onboarding process, and then to their approach as colleagues, really. And then, I'm really appreciative of what we've done with the committees and the different focuses we're identifying people. We really expanded, we kind of zoomed out that lens to be more inclusive, more collaborative to that. And again, going through these trainings to ensure that we're all minimizing those biases, and hopefully maximizing that access that I talked about initially. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Michelle, and take us in the presentation, we appreciate it.
So just to start, reiterate what our goals look then, is really continue to have that commitment to actively recruit, train, and retain our staff. So with that, and then build diverse staff. So some of the work that you saw from our staff tonight, so the word that I thought of when they were closing was purposeful. The work that you saw with students didn't just happen, it was like purposeful. It's embedded in the plan, it's embedded in the professional learning that we do. And it's embedded from the time that we first meet, and hand it, and bring them on board, and then the training, not just for our teachers, but for all of our staff in that classroom. So I'm going to just take some time to take you through, to start tonight, what is our staff profile? So as Dr. Nelson alluded to, the tool that we use to collect staff demographic data is anytime you have a new employee that's hired, they, they receive as a voluntary staff identification form. Periodically, we also send this out to staff with their teams that they want to make, it's all self-identification. They do have a choice to choose to disclose or not disclose, they have to know that, that option. And so we are really hard to expand, so that our, our data is more, you know, inclusive. And what I mean by inclusive, that people are identifying, are feeling comfortable to identify, because that is, the issue is there is reflecting data to make sure that we have. So I share this with you this form, because this, the information that is collected is rarely, is tied to equal opportunity commission data, so you'll see. And these are the categories for gender and race, ethnicity that are collected that you will see as we move forward in our data. So if you look at our, our data too, you're going to see, see some, something that also broke down, or broken down into some staff groups. So our certified, our certified staff, which are our teachers that are in American State Teaching Certification, our teaching assistants that have certification, our licensed professionals, so for example, our American State staff, occupational therapist, speech, that have professional licensures. And then you'll see all of our other, other staff. Because it's important that we recognize that everybody, no matter what their law are, have a, have a place for us here, and are part of our Western, like, thing. In that non-certified staff, you will see, there's competitive staff tied to civil service, and some of our non-competitive staff in civil service, so there's a broad range of roles. So you might have a laborer in that piece, and then you have a network technician, and, you know, a data liaison specialist within those groups. So let's talk a little bit about our data story, and we're going to start with looking at our gender. So this graph illustrates our gender makeup by our certified or in our licensed staff or a non-certified staff. There, as you know, it's shared on previous slides a little bit earlier, with the four categories, the female, male, non-binary, and the other spots. So it's very easy to see, you know, as educators in, you know, K twelve, pre-K, pre-twelve education, we are, you know, heavily made up of females, more so than some of our other groups. But you will see that there's less of a discrepancy between female and male for our non-certified group versus our certified group. So that is, that's data that we continue to monitor and watch when we think about our diversity profile and our representation of our staff towards teams. So chose to share this for one of our groups of our K three, because K three overall for our certified staff, and staff in general in K three, has been an area that is more heavily female-dominated, you know, with last now, so if you watch that. So pulled out this group a little bit for you to see. So yes, we're making some small gains. If you look back to the twenty twenty-one school year compared to where we are now, you'll see that we are making gains, and that's really attributed to where we really started to hone in on this work. Our administrative teams are certified administrators by gender. You know, if you look at our work from twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty school year to where we are now, while we're still largely female, you'll see that we have really have had an increase in female administrators. The district has actually increased by four percent at present time, which is a small, a small subgroup of our staff. So in addition to our gender focus, we're also focusing on diversifying our staff that are listening. So this next, these next few slides that I'm taking through show that, that part of our story. So this graph illustrates our overall staff, so all of our staff in the district is based on the EEO C form, how they have identified. You know, you'll see overall our white, non-Hispanic, or Latino staff continues to be our largest subgroup of our overall staff profile. So as I take you to this next slide, taking that subgroup out and looking at our other subgroups where we really have that focus, this zooms in on. So here you'll see, while we have small gains and increases in our diversity profile, we've continued to make steady gains, we continue to make gains in the subgroups. However, that work isn't done, but it, you know, it is, it does show, as we continue, as we're really focused on that, and as you'll see in our presentation, the pieces that we have worked on, where we are, where we're continuing to work on, and, you know, our future work. Is according by the wayside, and so it's reported at the campus. So our percentage by ethnicity and certification, so our cert, certified staff. So this side, like our previous slide shows, our certified and licensed staff. Listen, the percentages are small, it's definitely a smaller subgroup when we take out versus looking at all of our staff, to just our certified staff. Again, we're looking at those smaller subgroups that we are watching and monitoring closely. So you're going to see that there's steady and sustained growth, there's still work to be done. But I do want to make an important note that starting in the twenty twenty-one school year is really where we started to implement strategies, do a lot of research, and now we're, we've been implementing that. You will see significant growth since that time. So looking at our certified administrators, certified, so all of our directors, our principals, our assistant principals, assistant superintendents, superintendents, all of the group here. This graph shows that profile. So overall, you're going to notice some change in the overall profile. But if I take you here to this next slide, when we look at those subgroups that you're watching, that we're monitoring, it really highlights our focus since the twenty twenty-one school year till now. You'll see a significant increase in our certified administrators that are from other subgroups, from, you know, versus our white, non-Hispanic. So this is from that day data with twenty-five certified staff members. So our journey, so as you saw from our data story, you know, we have made gains in diversifying our staff, but we, we recognize and are committed that there's still work to be done. So with that sustained focus, we're going to, I'll share with you this evening, what we've done to get where we are now, and where we're continuing to work. This particular slide highlights our focus on recruiting and retaining our high-quality staff. So look, that goes back to the statement at the beginning. The work that you saw tonight doesn't happen, but happens everywhere, it's purposeful. It's purposeful all the way in this part of our journey as well. And it's really hiring and retaining that high-quality staff is really reflected in the diversity of our community. So if we continue to look at our staff diversity profile... So if we continue to look at our staff diversity profile, our student diversity profile, where are we starting to narrow, narrow those gaps to our focus? So during the 2021 school year, where we really made this focus, we really started to engage in research, we spent some time as part of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Coalition, there's a human resources subgroup that is working heavily on this work. And that's just the coalition, the next subgroup, our administrative team as a goal. We took some time to really dive in deep with the New York State Educated Diversity Report. And this came out in December of 2019, it was presented by the state legislator and the governor, and it really provided us that research-based best practices. So it gave an overall diversity report of educators across New York State, what we can learn, what are some of those goals, what are some of those actionable strategies and stuff. And that is really started to, that was the starting piece to dive in our book. Some big research that came out of that report is looking at overall educators in comparison to other professions tend to end up working, whether it be around college or where they grow up. It's not as a trend that most is receiving some other professions where people might move across the country to work or... And so when you look at our local universities, colleges that have our education programs and across New York State, there's a heavily concentrated area of diverse people going into education more in the New York City area. And you'll, and in that report, you can see where that, the educators landed in that area, whether they grew up there or they went to college in that. So that continues to be a focus, and our partnerships with our local universities is really keying in our to be more holistic platform. So we really have created, taken that piece from that Educated Diversity Report, other research, and now we're in the midst of putting all those pieces in the puzzle together so that that focus, we don't lose track of that focus. So some pieces that we did, and you have this in your PowerPoint, if you want to view the interview training video, you'll be able to put down that later and do that on your own. That provides for all of our interview committees to go in to make sure we're doing things, not only legaling what we're interviewing, but we're really being aware of our biases, we're being aware of what it is that we're looking for is misleading, and that really is something that has been a great practice. You see that with all of our committees, even if it's a smaller committee, it's not just for our administrators, we're seeing it with our teachers, teachers, assistants, aides. Mr. Brennan and I are talking today as we get ready to set up an interview for another position, now we may, we're maybe to show that we're all interested in that part of those interviews. Dr. Johnson had shared in his introduction, the work that we've been doing on our interview teams to diversify who's on those interview teams so that we're getting more perspective, and we're making sure that our systems and processes are the same across the district. So with that, hiring manual has been created, and with that comes the training and clarity around who's on committees, who should be on committees, how are we referencing, checking all of those pieces. And it's really focused on adding more stakeholders. We have more students involved in our processes now, we have more parents and guardians involved in our processes, more people step across different routes, so that it's not just reliant solely on our admin team when we're interviewing. And that continues to grow, and that is because of researches that are developed that we also need to revise a little bit. So this slide here just shows some samples of some of the interview committees from So we've also placed great emphasis on our recruitment efforts, and we have visited historically black colleges, we've done interviews there, we've met with students, we've reached out and had connections, the historically black colleges to get the Western Quake game out there and to connect with either future educators or those that are already educators that come back to those fairs. We attend regular recruitment fairs, some that are in person. We also have done diversity recruitment fairs that have been solely online through platforms such as Handshake, Twitter Expo, and we set up interviews, screening interviews for that, we bring groups of kids, kids of candidates in to those that talk about Western Quake, really work to get them to want to apply, and to even, most of them, it's trying to get them to move to this area to recruit candidates. We have attended the Rochester Teacher Recruitment Day each year, the Central New York, the Western New York Recruitment Day, Apple line, we visit local colleges, we're interviewing students at that colleges, and really have continued to create partnerships even with our colleges all in that opportunity group. We have worked, hosting our instructional team with our Pathways to Teaching Program, so those pro-year-old programs, you know, that has been expanded. I know I've gone and consulted with the classes, we've worked out interviewing skills, we've talked about different types of roles in education, and really trying to get our, even our own students to go into education, so that they come back here and help us. We also have worked in collaboration with our Western Quake Teachers Association and NISIT, and that was awarded to them, which has then created an educators club at DAK as part of that, and that is part of all that we've created. We've created marketing videos, so thank you to Jake Honan and Jacque De Veronica, we've created new marketing videos that we bring to recruitment fairs and highlight our staff, what makes Western Quake great, because we want people, we have to get them to notice us. So those are just some of the recruitment focus areas that we have done and continue to do and continue to develop. In order to strengthen our hiring practices as well, last year, as part of the diversity and equality coalition, the HR subgroup, we helped focus groups to learn what is, what are the qualities of the Western Quake point. So as we're looking at that, we talk about taking the bias out of hiring, having a sense of what it is that you're looking for in a candidate. And it's, it's not just pedagogy, it's the soft skills that people bring into the role as well. And so from that, we looked at those qualities that we developed through those focus groups. We really unpacked our district mission and core commitments, and the New York State Culture, Responsive, and Sustained Framework. And then from there, we use those areas to strengthen some of the tools, the pieces that we're using in interviews, so that we really focus on the diversity of candidates, and we're not just looking for candidates that are just like us, that are saying things exactly how I would do something. So that's, that's important, and that goes back to our bias work. So some of the words that are up here are just some of those keywords that came out of those qualities of the Western Quake point, they also came out of our district mission and core commitments, and they were also words that go cross-reference and really came alive through the New York State Culture, Responsive, and Sustained Framework. So using those, we again, looked at our hiring practices. So we took some time to look at what are we used to, what have we been using to praise candidates once we've interviewed? And this up here is the form that we had used. You will see that while it has some great characteristics of educators, of what you can look for in a candidate, there's not a lot of clarity around what does all that mean. So when you think of an interview committee and the consistency, it's really hard to describe those unless you really know descriptors to them. So what I might look for might be different than Dr. Johnson, or he might, I differently look at Christine, he might differently. So we wanted to make that clear. So as a result, and in partnership, in collection from other districts across New York, we have developed a hiring report, where the qualities are based on the New York State framework, the New York State Culture, Responsive, and Sustained. So you'll see here, high expectations and diverse infrastructure, that's one of the four pillars in that framework. And then there are specific descriptors. We are in the process right now, through our DEI Coalition Committee, of creating questions that we would ask candidates that are tied to job descriptions, tied to the rubric, so that when we're asking questions, we're able to get a sense of our candidates based on, that we can then evaluate and assess. The rubric is holistic, meaning that candidates necessarily have to have everything in one area, but overall, where are they calling? And it gives each person as they're interviewing, a chance to have their voice heard, right? So I would rate the rubric, another person on the committee would rate the rubric, and just that look and count, right? So it's not just one person's voice at the table, it happens to be the most confident voice at the table, it keeps other people at the table who are really looking at what a candidate would bring, because we're all going to see different things, and that really helps level the playing field for our candidates. So we, in addition to the developing questions, are developing training for the rubric, so that when people are on interview committees, they have a training to the rubric to let them know that there's consistency, and then in the nature of the catalog, that rubric is really important. So there's the rubrics that are developed, there are the processes developed, and those tools for that, and getting ready to really implement that full force as we dive into our spring hiring season. We have also been looking at our job descriptions and revising job descriptions to make sure that our job descriptions have that inclusive language. One of the pieces in our share, our leadership book study, but it really came out, really helped the study that we did this summer, was job description, the one we put up on the job posting, can inadvertently make somebody not apply because of the words that are chosen, and might make people feel like maybe they're not qualified to take that leap. And so, or it doesn't show our story, and it might make a candidate feel like, oh, this doesn't feel like it's going to be right for me, because I don't sound like I fit their profile, because I don't sound like they're going to want me in our group. So we really spent some time as we went through review of job descriptions, to make sure that it embeds that inclusive language, and this is really also part of our career review process, and we continue to look at their job descriptions. This summer, our leadership team embarked on a study led by Dr. Johnson titled Hiring for Diversity: The Guide to Building an Inclusive and Equitable Organization. Again, just even having our entire leadership team engaged in this work shows the commitment, and you know, to continue to, not only this past summer, but through leadership, leadership team meetings, executive cabinet meetings this year, we have gone back into the book, talking about pieces, people are really starting to ask for questions about their own building data, like I showed you tonight, the overall district diversity data, where people are really starting and wanting to get into their building data, so we look at what are we doing across the list. And so it really shows that, that commitment, people are asking great questions when we go through the interview process, sometimes the phone call I'll get from members of our leadership team, again, I'm doing this, is this a right question to ask? Can I just check my bias on something? Like people are just really conscious of it, and it's exciting to see, because it shows there are a lot of those stuff. So from the leadership book study, I thought I'd share with you just the quotes tonight, and what does that mean in practice, and again, what's that mean in hard practice? So I'm just, I'm actually going to just read some things from the slide, so you know, who's, who's that meaning? So one of the quotes here, "Each of us, from chief executives down to entry-level employees, has a sphere of influence in advancing diversity on our teams and our organizations." So what does that mean in practice? It means that we, again, going back to Aaron, that data at the building level, what's that story about? Setting goals. So we have overarching goals at district level, but what are some of those goals at the building level, the diversity of our personnel? And then how are we making sure that everybody in our organization together is committed to it? So, you know, we don't do this alone, it's not one person, but it's all of us together. Another quote, simply put, if you want your team to embrace your diversity goals, they need to be part of building them. So again, it's looking at data and building the goals together, monitoring our progress, and that commitment is on the road. So just because we make growth doesn't mean the work is done, if we're connected, we build, to receive information. Going deeper than broad strokes that have often put to diversity, it's down to developing a deeper understanding of different communities that are underrepresented in our workforce. So there's a variety of subgroups, so our diversity profile is broad, and we have to make sure that we're looking at that broad scope, scope lenses, and not just focusing on one group at a time, but really how do we work our makeup together? You get one first impression of the job seekers, research has consistently shown that candidates of all kinds are looking for employers who are committed to diversity and inclusion. So we continue to analyze, and we'll continue to analyze and revise our profile for recruitment, so what are we showing in our social media and our marketing profile that we show as this break? What is our district cross-site? You know, so we have all this great work that has now happened with our website, now we're looking a little deeper into the resources side of our website, and we're making sure that there are marketing videos up there that we've created, all those pieces. Questions that we ask in interviews, do those questions that we ask in interviews show people that we value them as individuals, you know, in the career experience as well? And again, our job descriptions are important. Inclusive language is an important first step in setting the tone for inclusion in the longing to potential job seekers. So again, it goes to our job descriptions and postings, our interview questions. We took this quote here on affinity bias, so when interviewing, stick to the script. Remind the urge to bond with candidates over non-work-related activities, experiences, or preferences. How often do you meet somebody and then connect with them right away because you paid that first impression, or they'll like you? And it's very easy to then not listen to other things that they're saying when they answer questions. So that's all part of that training that we do, and that's a good piece, because that's such a part of our community nature as well. So we really have to be mindful of our judgment, because we're doing this for our community as well. So not only do we have the training on bias, we have created a visual that we have just really started to use to make sure that all the different types of biases are in the hands of people that are interviewing, so we check that along the way, because it's easy, it's easy to forget. Selection bias tends to veer its head in multiple spots throughout the hiring process, so mitigating it requires a combination of training and structure. Your goal is to create systems that encourage objective reviewing with a competitive bias. So that goes back to the hiring rubric. We're using a telling process for candidate debrief, where, you know, if you're on an interview committee, you're given, the candidates, after we interviewed everybody, we ask people not to talk about candidates in between, to take notes, notes, they got, they circle who's their top, we collect them, and from there, we see where, where people have written it, so that we talk about the candidates' strengths and weaknesses, so that we're not losing sight, having quieter voices. And then the importance of re-engaging candidates for feedback after the interview. So one of the things that we don't have now, that we learned from the book that we're going to be working on, is what's that feedback that you give to candidates after you interview? So how do we know that when a candidate came into that interview process, they felt welcome? They felt, you know, what can we learn from our candidate swap process, even if they're not just a candidate that we hire? It's really going to help us strengthen, you know, our profile both for recruiting and retention, because if we're sending those messages when we're hiring people, we might be doing that with our people when they're here, which is going to be the, that retention. So I know that, you know, it was a lot in a short amount of time, but again, this is a focus, and we'll continue to be able to, we are...
Rosa, I'd like to add three things too if I could just add to that. That we're captured in this, but related to our strategic plan. And I think you touched upon one you're asking me. One is on, okay, when we talked to our folks back when we had our strategic planning summit, that was one area across the board that was identified as an area of the program. And consistently, we do it very well with our teachers. So we have a teacher reduction. But in addition to that, our administrators, our non-certificate staff, what are we doing? We've heard it from our units too. So again, that's about in the strategic plan. Looking at the presentation now, as we were delivering it, I wrote it down like, you know what? We're kind of missing that whole there too. Because when people come on board, they need that sustained engagement and support. And really the clarity about the expectations, right? The resources, the dialogue, okay? That maybe in the past wasn't happening. And again, because we didn't have the structures there to do that. The other piece I would say is coaching. Again, we're talking about what we're doing with instructional staff, which is a requirement by the state. But how are we doing that in other areas? So we've started that work, we've initiated that instruction. We've been talked about it here. And we talked about the funding for that, especially with our administration, right? And so again, you know, we talked about administrative color who comes in. They look around, we don't have a large population of administrative of color. And Michelle just hit it. She said, hey, look, as a region, we're working on affinity groups, but they're not able to get that moving because we don't have the groups to pull together, right? So we're applying that, those needs, those ideas to our coaching partnerships as well and being mindful, okay, talk with those folks and saying, okay, for your needs, how can we best support you? Then what is that match based on that? And that's a part of that too, you know, we're making those partnerships. The other thing that I love that Michelle touched upon in this, and it was a big part of that book, is your opinion. And that people are going to look at, and I think again, as Veronica and Pete are so very blessed with Deputy Veronica and what he's brought to the district as far as creating a direct like window into our classrooms and schools and really promoting that so people can see. And I'll tell you, and I know everybody around the table, Chris especially, can talk about this. We just talked about this around your ASI group. We emerged one of the leading districts around our EDI, especially around working with instruction. So people are seeing that. And then when they get in here, we're talking about what we're doing to build community, right? You've experienced this again as well. We're incorporating these, these community building practices into our daily life with our staff as well. So people aren't just going to their classrooms and shut the door and play it, right? And I think that's a big part of it as well. So, understand.
I have some questions about the, just the self identity. I noticed at the current one you have under gender, it just says male and female.
I think that's a standard EOC form though. I don't think we can change that. I think that's like the standard, right? It's like, yeah, they have to change it.
What is the percentage of use of that?
It's high percentage. They don't have that number off the top of my head. But if you, you know, were to look at the overall, the just the gender right now, if they were unspecified, that would also mean they're using medical. That's how we did our data because we didn't have, we don't have something with that pad where it says they're using. They usually do unspecified and then it's on the agenda. So it's a pretty high percentage, but definitely, you know, as you know your staff. You know, we have, I will tell you, the staff that we have the most difficult time identifying their ethnicity are some, are other some. For varied reasons, I think it's a continuation of the nature that people feel safe in identifying.
Yeah, what kind of education are we getting, or instruction are we getting when you hand this out? Or do you talk about why this is important to us or what we're trying to do?
Yeah, so we do, as part of our onboarding process, so we have staff that are nominating participants. They do like their payroll benefits information, that's when they fill this out. And there is, is, if we're meeting with them, we go through what it's for, what it's used for, why we encourage people to use that. So it's not just something that's handed to them, there is a conversation that takes place.
That's what sort of made me think of the role from an action plan because, you know, you're sort of an expert in this. So they're able to come in and like look at these things and be able to give us some better tools than we have. But, you know, some additional tools and support to be able to provide that education, have a deeper dive into the data, sort of connect the pieces of the information we're getting, you know, to our HRIS. So when these applications are coming in, they can tie it all together and make sure that we aren't forgetting something that we're able to be able to, you know. Yes.
Remind us for example?
Yeah, it's very important.
Well, and you know, and I'm taking notes and I think, Justin, you're making great points. And I think about the Coaster that I mentioned, and that is an area that is emerging. So I can take that information back, come up with that and explore some of those ideas that we get. And see if we can create something not only for us but across the district.
Want people to be inclusive.
Right.
Right.
Right, good.
Options.
We're not experts in this.
Right.
We're, we're, we're working, you know, we're trying to identify literature and these practices and things that are to be effective. But again, you know, anything that we can do to strengthen that, we absolutely will pursue.
And I don't know if policies are only one aspect that we can use. It could be ten branch out. HR works does a great effort of action assessment, helps put together a plan. If they are operating resources also, I would just throw that out there if, you know, we want to collaborate and or the policies and maybe see what HR wants us to offer. But I don't have experience in really, really good comprehensive.
And that's a list again. Maybe the Coaster is if we're able to create relationships with an entity like HR works through the Coaster, then it becomes able. So that's why the Coaster is beneficial. But we can certainly branch out from that to just necessarily. Thank you, appreciate it.
I know we, you know, it's best practice to use the EOC form, but is there any kind of like other options that we can do? Just to Justin's point when it comes to raising diversity. Like, I guess society would consider Hispanic or Latino, but I don't identify either. So, I don't know, it's a lot of different little areas that I feel like we still expand on.
Any other questions? Thank you for the great discussion and the great presentations. That brings us to new business. And the first item is policy review. Mrs. Kramer thought she was going to get a break. I will turn it over to Dr. Johnson. Mrs. Kramer?
Well, thank you. So tonight, I know it's a very nice conversation. So it's part of our policy, a three-year policy review committee. We continue to work through our 1,000 policies. So tonight, we will see policies 1331, 1334, 1335, 1337, 1410, 1420, 1510.1, 1512, 1520, 1530, 1540, 1610, 1612, 1620, 1730. We have reviewed them and have no way to change them, so just so that you know that they've been reviewed. But then for review, for people at our next meeting, we use policies to have some recommended vision. So policy 1331, which is duties to the district clerk. Again, as we look at our policies around making sure that they, the inclusive women are supportive of our community. It's really a revision to add some spaces between paragraphs so it's accessible. Policy 1332, duties of the school district clerk has been revised to probably flag this update gender pronouns. Policy 1339 has duties of extra classroom activity funds. Some contributor faculty advisor has been revised to update gender pronouns as well as spaces for accessibility. Policies, I'm not missing any, you know. 1334, duties of legal counsel. There were just some revisions tied to some accessibility and spaces. Policy 1510, regular board meetings and rules. Has its fix for formatting throughout the document again for accessibility. Policy 1511, agenda format has been revised at the landing management. It would be agenda, add space between paragraphs for accessibility. Policy 1612 has been revised to add spaces for formatting and accessibility. Policy 1720 minutes has been updated with gender pronouns and spaces for accessibility. Policy 1730 has been updated to add spaces for accessibility. Policy 1540, student representatives to the board adds accessibility to the table.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. Thank you on our behalf to the whole policy committee that has gone into this. This is a first read on these, so we'll anticipate employee January 18 meeting. If you have any questions, please reach out to Dr. Johnson. Next is approval of the 2023-24 board of goals and they have the recommended resolutions.
We are resolved with the 2023-2024 West Roundtable Work Education Goals being presented.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, question that I'm saying. So I'll take this one over again, so over to Dr. Johnson here. We had this discussion in our last board meeting. We outlined our goals. I know we still plan to have some discussion internally with the board about how we measure these metrics. But I think we have a good foundation as far as our businesses. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
So I'm worried that we're adopting goals before we have the efforts. I did some research this past week on what came up in the agenda. Even in New York State School Awards Association, Doc's help polls, it says that you should be setting the metrics when you adopt the goals. I'm worried that kind of putting the parter before the horse. I don't have anything wrong with the goals, okay? I know it's a little different this year, I just want to discuss with the boards. We need, as a board, to do a better job of getting this out there, right? We need to make a commitment in the summer to get this done. Because as much as we have our goals, we have, Dr. Johnson will look at them, the administrative staff will look at them. We're going to want them to know what we want. We're coming out with goals now in February, so we have January 4. So that's just my concern is if we're going to have that workshop in, in January, like week two, I can't remember exactly. You know, should we table this and get the metrics and then do it? I mean, if you look at SuperEVAL, which we use to evaluate everything, they talk about the metrics and having them in place when we adopt the goals. And New York State School Goals, which we highly rely on. So those are my questions to the board. I don't have a problem so much with the board, it's a process to measure.
Well, on that.
Table?
No.
Sorry, I thought you were going over there. So we have, we did establish matrix on some boards. We had, we had, some boards that sent out that information to us, some boards do it, some boards don't. Some boards look at, there's a strategic plan in their mission statement as their goal to support administration in the, in the, because that is their, that's their policy. And then what they've made is to support administration in the implementation of those, which Erin gives us and the leadership team have given us, the management plan review and, you know, Erin's constantly giving us those checking ones, which he also does on his evaluation. If you're comfortable with this and any other checking ones. Recently happened in there. Do you understand like year three, the expectations?
So I, to have this sort of next conversation about this, that, because it's sort of our discretion on like how we want to do this, like why are we, who's that, that this would be the basis on? That we were going to get a little more granular of like, so like the first one, you know, continue to support the implementation of the strategic plan. So like building off of that. So like what is it that we want to achieve implementation of this part of the, you know, and then make that specific goal, you know, and then make some, you know, measurable steps of like, you know, how do we, what do we need to do to obtain that? And that's sort of hopefully the metric piece of it. So I think maybe our first step is that we have to, as a board, figure out like, are we okay with this, these, you know, new set of goals? Or, or do we want to table this in common discussion so we can treat these as formal metric goals?
There's nothing stopping us from having other board action leaders amend or change or revise state goals. There's no reason we can't.
Right, are you, you know, one of the staff's goals, I mean, you want to do something, you know, just want to be able to see it there to people or they know they've been achieved it. So I, I agree.
I agree, I mean, these goals aren't very broad, like you said, the first one to support the decision of the strategic plan. What is that of life? So this is not supported, strategic plan of life. And it could be as easy as just adding an objective, like what objective do you need to be in order to attain that goal?
What's our target? What's our end goal?
You know, like, going to certain committees. So does it mean going to, sometimes it's like activity, you know. Erin, I think it's a, I agree with you a little bit, specifically on what our targets are.
So we're sort of all over the page.
Sorry.
As, as we heard the cats. Yeah, I, I appreciate all of the feedback. I think ironically to John's point, but one of my concerns is the more we keep the hand down the road and we're shortly running down to finish things, which is where we kind of got ourselves from last year's level and into the end of the school year. With things on finish that we, that we carry into this year, which is great, that we solved through, but it limited our time. So we're a government team. And so I think probably the best option, you want to make a form of motion to table it on and see how that goes and then.
Just a suggestion.
What? What? We can follow Robert's polls and we can say if there's a motion to table on a second, vote on that. And if the majority wants to table it, the majority wants to vote.
Now we table it and then we'll be, don't connect it.
I mean, we'll have to decide then to pay it back. We have a meeting on the 18th. We have a limited amount of time in our workshop, about 90 minutes. So I'm not going to promise that we can pass that out in that time schedule.
So if we maybe, you know, give us some homework to say like, maybe come back to the next meeting, whatever we decide of, like what these metrics look like. So we're not sort of, you know, again, like spinning our wheels and having the same conversations forward over and.
Exactly. We all have emails.
Yeah.
Could I offer a perspective from superintendent's review? So just thinking about the five years that I've been here, I think, you know, this has been an ongoing conversation with the board. And again, the members that have been around the table through those discussions can either add or maybe invite this representative today something, please step in. But I think we've gone back and forth as to whether or not the board is setting goals, you know, from the perspective of the district or for your own improvement as governance to, so I can remember in different years we've talked about that, right? And I pulled up the NISBA's operating guide, right? Because we talked about NISBA around board operations, all right? And I think one of my wonderings as the superintendent is we, we have a five-year strategic plan. This talks about, you know, as the Board of Education working with the district, setting the mission, the vision, and then the goals for the district. And we have that. You know, I think that's why, you know, as I listen to you, I wonder if that's part of the struggle? Like, how do we support that? You've said that. And I was, my job as your superintendent to work with our people to execute that. And, you know, and, and I think part of the conversation, how do you support that, right? And I know from my, from my chair, I must keep you engaged in that through updates, reports, and dialogues, right? And you've served on different committees, but I do wonder about how or if that should look different. Thinking about, you know, the three essential responsibilities of the Board of Education. So I just want to offer that out of my perspective.
So there's a motion on the table, if you're tabled. Don't leave anybody second. Okay. So we'll move forward on the original motion on the approval of the goals. All those are big. All those. That is five. Next is field trip request. They have the recommended resolutions.
We are resolved with the field trip request for IHS performing arts students to travel to Pelican, New York January 5th through the 7th of 2024. We approved as per the.
We have one, just one, I'm saying. May I use for Dr. Johnson?
So I had sent you an email, this is what we added today. And again, this was an error on our part. So this was planned earlier in the year and the advisor has done a great job following the timeline. You'll look at this as around performing arts, which are really magnificent opportunities for students to go and engage at a very high level. It's being funded through the proceeds from what they've done, you know, as far as the performing arts and what they've raised over time. So they have a charter set up. It meets all of the benchmarks that we've established around chaperoning and available funding and different things like that. Again, it was an error as far as how it was passed along. And in my opinion, I would want to punish the students with advisor because of that. So we'll make that recognition, although it is an outlier, this is not the norm towards a new pandemic. But it's a time there example.
Always. Questions or comments on that? That is a six zero. Still a question?
I just have, I didn't know what to say. So Dr. Johnson, I have a question for you. This past week, as we get ready for the governor's address, they've talked about some new holidays for schools. When they would, and I, I don't know when they were going in practice. So have you had any feedback from that yet?
I've got some information about that regarding to the planning for next year.
So it's, all those are not going to affect the calendar we have in place, right?
I understand. That's, that's my understanding.
I just, you heard the holidays and I know one of them's coming up, but I didn't know if it meant like we had to kind of.
Yeah, nothing that, I, everything that I've received and heard in conversations, that's, that's inevitably affect that.
Okay, thanks.
That just did come up at legislative meetings, but actually at the Asian Pacific Island of New York holiday, because it falls on a weekend this year, it does not apply to the current calendar. That brings us to the consent agenda. They have the recommended resolutions.
We are resolved with the Board of Education of the West Roundtable Central School District approves the consent agenda, which includes IG through I.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, sent by Mrs. Warrenall. Tonight's consent agenda includes recommendations of committee on special education, revised lists of authorizations, appointments, designations, and readoptions, surplus equipment, textbook approval, A Day with No Words, textbook approval, How to Write the Story, textbook approval, Micas Big Questions, textbook approval, One Well, The Story of Water on Earth, textbook approval, Stella Brings the Family, textbook approval, That's Not My Name, textbook approval, The Name of the Word. Are there any items on the consent agenda on which a board member would like to have a separate session? Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed to load on separately? Any questions or comments with regard to the consent agenda? Or any other textbook section? I really enjoyed mine, it was a very short read, but it was great. I read Stella Brings the Family.
We read How to, me and my daughter read How to Write the Story and we actually practiced what was in the book and it really is great. And it felt like it was like what kids did today or what we saw demonstrated today, how they put their resources together to write the story, so that's a great, it's a great.
I read A Day with No Words, it was a big read for me.
So, all right.
Because a lot of my students use assistive technology devices and it was doing a lot of those with us. I read it to several of my students and they really kind of like said.
Yeah, and I advise us big questions. Every classroom should have a copy of this, especially because at the end, it gives like talking questions and things. So just a really great resource.
I feel like we're channeling already from Harvard. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right, all those are big. That is six zero. And that will bring us to future meetings, where we have future meetings.
Yes, we have a business meeting on January 18th at 7:00 PM at District Office. Workshop on January 25th at 5:30 in District Office. And a study session on February 1st at 6:00 PM at D.
And that brings us to executive session. Is there a reason to go into executive sessions? All right, well, then I will entertain a motion to, thank you, Mrs. Warrenall. Sent by Mr. Potter, all of those are big. Six zero?
I got caught between two windows.
Thank you, everyone, for your productive meeting.
I know, it's.